Thank you. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, May 7th, Special Meeting of the Port Madera Town Council. Roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
There.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. All right. We're going to take, uh, public comment regarding our closed session items. We have two closed session items. One is a public employee performance evaluation for the town manager and one is conference with a real property negotiator. Uh, do we have any public comments in the room?
Well, I would like you to repeat those slowly so I can understand. I'm new to politics.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us. So the first item is the town manager's annual performance review.
Oh.
And then the second item is going to be, uh, conferring with our real estate agent, uh, on a parcel that we're considering leasing.
Oh, nice. Where is it?
Uh, so we've got, uh, 645 Tamil Pious Drive and 100 Meadow Creek Drive.
And what are you going to do with them?
We're looking for somewhere for a senior center.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, when I get to be that age, I'll probably.
Wonderful. Any public comment that you'd like to give?
Uh, I don't know enough to comment. I, Michael has tried hard to make sure that the street sweeper, which I have since 1971.
So these are actually.
Oh, I did wrong.
We gotta take public comment right now just on our specific items that we're going to talk about in closed session, but we'd love to hear that.
He's a nice guy. I voted him in.
We, we'd love to hear that comment, uh, when we start our regular meeting. We'll have open time for public comment and that's when we take comment on anything that's not on our agenda.
Within three minutes.
Within three minutes, yes. Yeah. So we will, we will look forward to hearing that thought, um, a little bit later tonight. Um, okay. So I'm not seeing any in-person public comment.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say I'm recusing myself from the consideration of the lease options just because my residence is falls within 1,000 feet of one of the considered properties, so I can't make a fair evaluation.
Sounds good. Thank you, Charles. Um, I don't see any further in-person public comment on our closed session items. Uh, Lorena, do we have any online?
We do not have online, um, comments or email comments.
Okay. So with that, the council is going to adjourn to closed session and we will come back and report out when we finish that discussion. And then we'll resume the, the regular full.
No, no, I have another topic and I only have three minutes. I'll let you gradually one given.
No, we will be, we will look forward to hearing it at the beginning of our, uh, regular.
There's a time in our state.
Yes, and we'll be back by 6:30. It's the regular meetings at 6:30. All right. So we're going to reconvene, uh, the council back into open session. We just had two closed session items. Uh, we have no action to report from either of those items. Uh, we've already taken public comment on the closed session items. We will adjourn the special meeting. And we're going to call to order the Tuesday, May 7th, regular meeting of the Port Madera Town Council. Um, do we need to take another roll call or are we okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
There.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Yes.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We hope.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to have open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Uh, folks who'd like to make public comment are welcome to come right up, uh, to our podium here, uh, and speak for up to three minutes apiece. Um, so we will open this up for public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak, uh, step right up. Okay. Yeah. So, um, and yeah, so just if you wouldn't mind just speak up, cause that's, our mic is on this little gray thing here on the, on the central table.
All right. I will do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, California, um, Port Madera neighbors. And good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for serving. I'm here on several matters, but my time is limited to three minutes. So I probably am going to, uh, divide these and return to other meetings to be heard. Let me ask you a question. Can we? Can we allow members in Port Madera to vote more? Can you put more things on the ballot? Can we have a say, for instance, um, about the new town hall, which is $15 million? I think that should have been on the ballot. And a couple of years back, it was on the ballot and it was voted down. So it kind of looks like to me that council members got behind closed doors and decided for personal reasons that they were going to make the decision, which is costing taxpayer $15 million. But I will give you your chance to comment. I can be wrong and if I am out of line or whatever, uh, you may say what you have to say and we can have an audience, an open discussion now. I also am investigative reporter from CMTM, which does our audio video. And the real reason I'm here, the most important reason, has to do with fires. And politics in this town and in this county being very remiss. And I think being very dishonest. I live at the end of South Toledo Street and my neighbors and I are in a death trap. There is no way we can get out. So I called Brian Washington and I said, Brian, give me the plans with that development plan. I want to see the plan, Brian. He sent them to me and there was not one mention of evacuation routes. Now that's a fire area. And Max Courtney, Director of Open Space, backed by the supervisor, should have done a walk around and said, where do we put the evacuation routes? Oh, there's no place to put it, or we can put them there. But those are the first things that should have gone in before that area was developed. It is now open seven hours around the clock and there are motorcycles. I see them out of my window. I'm like in a tower and I can see everything. Three or four o'clock in the morning, there's people on marijuana. I will be glad to take a lie detector test. I had to go out there with kids and say, you can't let us.
Thank you. And I have to ask you to wrap up your comments. That's your three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll be back.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to invite our next speaker up to the podium here. Anyone want to, uh, give public comment on any items not on tonight's agenda, please?
Hi, my name is Charlie Kirscher. I'm going to read some prepared remarks because I only have three minutes and I want to be respectful of your time. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address this council and for your leadership in our community. My name is Charlie Kirscher, a longtime resident of Port Madera. I'm an entrepreneur and a passionate supporter of community arts. Uh, I represent and here representing a group of real estate professionals, nonprofit leaders and artists who've worked together for the last two years to resurrect the abandoned cinema, 41 Tamil Vista. Our goal is to bring forward to the community an arts and events venue and a community club called The Living Room. Project has been a partnership between nonprofit organizations interested in resurrecting the space for community benefit and a for-profit operating company led by myself comprised of professionals from property management, multifamily housing, event production, music production and hospitality. We understand that the property has been abandoned since 2020. We also understand that it has fallen into disrepair, that it has been repeatedly vandalized and is intended for redevelopment as a multifamily apartment complex. Despite these challenges, we had made two offers to the property owners over the last six months to operate the space and lease it until such a time that the property is sold and approved for redevelopment as housing. Our intention for the property is to launch a proof of concept for a portfolio of community clubs in the Bay Area, intended to connect retail brands to customers and save artistic spaces. Sadly, the ownership group has not been willing to compromise on their ask of $20,000 a month for the property, a 700% increase from their prior tenants' semestral theaters. Last week, we were informed by the ownership group of their intention to move forward with the plan to demolish the property. We understand this, this is an entirely financial decision by the owners and that the property has presented issues for scanning designs for over a decade. We understand that their preference would have been to bring to our community a beautiful redevelopment by a national retail brand founded right here in Marin. Nonetheless, we think that The Living Room can bring new life to our community and create new stories and a beloved icon. I'm making public comments today and a few others are with the intention that we can bring more attention to the plight of this cinema and its impact on our community. And I hope to enroll our community in a more positive path forward. In the spirit of the Star Wars movie, a new hope. We have two hopes for the next 98 that I'm addressing the council with. First, that the team from The Living Room, which I am happy to introduce anyone to and have materials to share on, can gain access to the space in coordination with city inspectors and/or the fire department to clean the interior, repair external damaged doors, remove graffiti and inspect building systems all at our own cost. Second, if the property has fallen into such an irreparable state since our last inspection, that we may have the support of our local community to work with the owners to save the unbelievably beautiful 60-foot, 70-millimeter screen that's in our own backyard and reutilize this screen for artistic spaces and nonprofits in the future if it is to be demolished. I want to thank you for the time to make these three minutes remarks. I thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you very much. We'll invite our next speaker up. Anybody who'd like to give public comment, please come on up.
Hi.
Hello.
A hard act to follow. I don't have anything written. Um, I just, it's my first meeting. My name is Alana Green. I'm a Port Madera resident. I'm proud one of that. And, um, I've known Charlie for over two decades. Um, and I can vouch for him as an incredible businessman and an entrepreneur, great business acumen and a real community organizer. Um, I've been following his progress with The Living Room and am interested as a potential investor, a partner, and more than anything, I'm walking distance to this venue and I've been so devastated to see how it's just, um, demolished since the pandemic. And, um, I, I live, you know, within a half a block and would be just thrilled to frequent it and support it and roll the money back into the community in a meaningful way. Um, I'm a nonprofit consultant and I see a lot of opportunity for partnership. I've been talking to other colleagues about it and would be happy to answer questions, but I just wanted to show my support today for The Living Room and for Charlie and for this incredible business opportunity. Um, I'm sure to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Who else would like to, uh, speak on any items not on tonight's agenda? Anybody else who's in person here tonight? No? Okay. Looks like we don't have any other in-person public comment. Um, Lorena, do we have any hands up on Zoom for open time public comment?
Um, we do not. Oh, we do. Sorry. From Lucinda's spin.
Great.
And, uh, before I unmute her, we did receive, um, the written comment from Charlie and another comment. Um, and they were uploaded to the website and available for the public, um, prior to this meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Lucinda, go ahead when, when you're ready.
Good evening. Um, I want to just make a very brief request, uh, for our, um, neighbors because I've heard some comments with regard to picking up children at the parking area, uh, right there by the community center and Cafe Verde. And our, um, community officer is giving folks who, there's not enough parking in the first place, which is the problem. So people are parking in maybe a red zone or maybe causing that, um, a brief impasse of all of the fire equipment that would need to go around. But they are not, they're not there to park their car. They're there to pick up their children. And I wonder if maybe, um, our community officer could be a little bit more lenient than giving them a hard time. If they stay in their car and they don't, um, leave their car, it seems to me that that might be a, a good resolution that, uh, there's not a problem and not a need for harassment or agitation. Let's put it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lucinda. Lorena, do we have any other hands up, uh, for open time?
We, we do not have additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close open time for tonight, uh, and move on with our agenda. We have no presentations, which brings us to item four, which is the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Uh, any member of the council or public can pull an item from the consent calendar.
I just wanted, yes, if I may, just real quickly respond to one of the points that was made regarding, uh, the town hall and just.
Sure, thank you.
Our audience member brought it up regarding the cost and the public nature, uh, which decisions were made. And I just wanted to respond by noting, and it's all on our website, the years of public meetings, public comment, the, the project was actually shaped in large part by our community members. All of the financing and discussion around how much it would cost were held in public meetings that were noticed publicly. So, um, I think the record will just show that, um, it was a very open and transparent process, um, to build, uh, this new town hall and all of the reasons why, um, the needs to do so were, um, enumerated at multiple meetings, uh, very, you know, years ago.
Yeah, may I ask you a question?
Oh, we, we had many, many meetings on this.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Adam.
On our website.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I know that you have, uh, engaged with residents' vote board to help clear up misperceptions like this and, and that you guys continue to do so as part of your regular duty. So.
Happy to.
It was never voted on.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, okay. So we're going to resume our consent calendar now. Again, these are items that are routine or have been previously discussed, uh, and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council or public can pull a consent calendar item for discussion if they'd like to. Would any members of the town council like to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this up to public comment. Would any members of the public comment like to pull a consent calendar item to discuss?
What does that mean?
It means, so we've got our agenda here. Do you have a copy of the agenda?
Uh, yeah.
So the, the items that are listed here, uh, item four, that's our consent calendar. So there's five items listed there and they're routine actions, but if somebody wants to discuss, for example, um, you know, in the quarterly investment report, they can pull it and, and open it up for full discussion. Would you like to pull a consent calendar, Adam?
Well, I apologize for being a little ignorant of some politics. Um, I've just currently with our country party taken it in through.
Sure, well, okay.
We do take public comments on the consent calendar, so you can, you can make any comments on any item under the consent calendar.
How much time do I have to read?
Three minutes.
How much time? Let's see what the consent, can somebody read it and just explain it as they read it? Is it simple? Can you list? Can you say it in a sentence?
Yeah, the, the agenda lists out exactly on the consent calendar, there's 4A through 4E, and it lists each action council will be voting on under the calendar. We put routine matters or matters that have previously been discussed on the consent calendar part rather than entertain each one. So you can look on your agenda, item 4A.
What's the first one, dear friend? I'm swimming in papers.
All right. I'm sure you can read 4A, 4B, 4C. So right now is the time to make public comment. I apologize. We, we don't have time for you to read through the agenda, but if anybody right now would like to make public comment on items 4A through 4E, this is your opportunity.
And in the meantime, we can take public comment, uh, via Zoom if there's anyone with their hands up on Zoom for public, uh, for consent calendar items?
No hands raised on Zoom and no in-house public comment for the consent.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing anyone approach the podium. Is there anyone who'd like to approach the podium and make in-person public comment? I'm not seeing any in-person public comments. We'll close public comment on the consent calendar and bring the consent calendar back to council for a motion.
I can make the motion through, I'm sorry, consent items 4A through 4E. And I want to thank staff for bringing this one program back to where I was during the summer.
Yes, very good. I'd love to hear an announcement about that since we're not actually in town.
Do we have a second?
A second, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item five on tonight's agenda, which is public hearings, the first of which is 5A. Uh, this is a first reading and possible introduction of a zoning ordinance amendment related to emergency shelters. And I will turn it over to our fantastic community development staff.
Good evening, municipal mayor and members of the council. Uh, this evening you will be considering amendments to portions of Title 18 related to implementation of that housing element. And the programs are, are being implemented through this ordinance related to emergency shelters, low barrier navigation centers and requests for reasonable accommodations. An adoption of this ordinance would implement four programs within the town through some adopted housing element. Uh, there are two different terms we'll be using, uh, this evening. They both are defined in state law. Um, an emergency shelter by definition is housing for homeless individuals that have minimal supportive services. No individual may stay for more than six months within an emergency shelter and no one may be denied access because of an inability to pay. A low barrier navigation center is a housing-first, low-barrier, service-enriched shelter that's focused on helping families and individuals move from homelessness to permanent supportive housing as quickly as possible. Uh, this type of use includes best practices to reduce, um, barriers to entry to a homeless shelter. And they can include such thing as allowing partners or pets, having areas for storage of personal belongings and also having, um, privacy within shared sleeping quarters. And housing first is, uh, means an evidence-based model that uses housing as a tool rather than as a reward. So since 2008, state housing law has required that all jurisdictions in California allow emergency shelters as a permitted use without any discretionary approvals, such as a use permit. In response to state law, the town first amended its ordinance to allow emergency shelters as a permitted use in 2015 in the public and semi-public facilities district. This map shows all of the properties that are zoned public and semi-public facilities on the east side of Port Madera. And I would like to point out that since, um, this ordinance was originally adopted, we have not, the town has not received any applications for emergency shelters or any inquiries for emergency shelters. Emergency shelters are very expensive to operate. Through conversations with Homeward Bound, which is one of the largest operators of emergency shelters in the county, we learned that if staffing costs alone at a shelter is over a million dollars. And this is because regardless of the size of the shelter, you always need at least two staff members 24/7. And you also typically need, um, security 24/7. So they're, they're very, very costly. And a lot of operators have shifted in recent years to more, um, providing permanent supportive housing because if there's not enough housing for people to transition to, you get a door, walking door going from the street to a homeless shelter and back. Uh, this next slide shows, um, parcels that are so public and semi-public facilities on the west side. Now, so the proposed ordinance amendments will satisfy two recent.
Sorry, I think it was the, it showed the same slide for east and west.
Oh, did it?
Oh.
Okay, my, my apologies. Uh, there should have been a different slide.
Sorry.
I can pull it up later if you're interested on the, the other parcels. Good catch. Now, so the proposed ordinance amendments will satisfy two recent state housing laws. Uh, the first is Assembly Bill 2339, and this bill became effective on January 1st, 2023. And the bill, it spans, uh, the prior emergency shelter requirements. Uh, jurisdictions must now identify one or more zoning districts that allow residential uses, including mixed uses, where emergency shelters will be allowed as a permitted use. And the existing zone where emergency shelters are permitted in Port Madera does not meet this, uh, bill because that zone does not allow residential and mixed uses. And there are two zoning districts in Port Madera that meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 2339. And those two, the districts are the C1 local shopping and the MX1 mixed use. Uh, the second housing bill is Assembly Bill 101. Uh, this bill became effective in 2019. And in order to comply with this bill, the town needs to allow low-barrier navigation centers in all zoning districts that allow, uh, all non-residential zoning districts that allow multifamily. And those two zoning districts in Port Madera are the C1 and the MX1. And this bill differs from the one we just talked about because, um, in order to comply, we need to allow low-barrier navigation centers in all of the zones versus the others bill, you just need to pick a minimum of one zone as long as it can satisfy the unmet, um, homeless, uh, need that has been identified. Um, so on June 20th, 2023, the town council adopted the six-cycle housing element, the 2023-2031 planning period. Now, there are three implementations programs shown on this slide that relate to emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers. Um, I would like to point out the second implementation program notes that the town will allow low-barrier navigation centers in multifamily, mixed use and on, and, um, uh, multifamily mixed use and
non-residential.
And the ordinance does not, um, include a change to the multifamily district to allow low-barrier navigation centers in that district because it's not required by state law. So it only is allowing this use in the MX1 and the C1. Now, this slide shows an implementation program related to requests for granting reasonable accommodations to persons with disability. Uh, the ordinance, the town zoning ordinance includes a variety of criteria that are used to evaluate and request for reasonable accommodation. And as part of the review of our draft housing element, HCD identified a concern with one of that criteria because they felt that it was too subjective. So this particular criteria is being revised, uh, to language that is more objective. And so as I mentioned, there are two zoning districts in Port Madera that allow both residential and mixed use and would therefore meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 2339. And this is the C1 district and the MX1 district. And again, in order to comply, we only need to identify one zoning district. And so staff has recommended that the MX1 district be amended to allow emergency shelters as a permitted use. And staff is recommending the MX1 district versus the C1 district because public transportation options along Tamil Vista are superior to other areas of town. And these parcels are also located in proximity to, um, services that would be helpful for individuals experiencing homelessness. Uh, this slide shows the parcels that are zoned MX1 in green and then the parcels zoned C1 in pink. Um, the parcels zoned MX1 are along Tamil Vista and that C1 parcels are generally surrounding old Port Madera Square. And then there are also some parcels adjacent to Tamil Pious as well. And this next slide is showing parcel zone C1 in east Port Madera. There are no parcels zoned MX1 on the east side of town. And these parcels are generally, um, in and around the Paradise direction. Now, so the next few slides show the proposed amendments to Title 18. A variety of, uh, sections are being amended. Um, all of these amendments are included in the draft ordinance, which is Attachment 1 to your staff report. So the definitions chapter is being revised, uh, to revise the existing definition of emergency shelter and to add a new definition for low-barrier navigation centers. Uh, the use chart in the commercial districts is being amended to allow, um, the low-barrier navigation centers as a permitted use in the C1 local shopping district. And the mixed use chapter is being revised to allow both low-barrier navigation centers and emergency shelters as a permitted use in the MX district. Um, currently, uh, there is an emergency shelter section of the, in the code that includes a variety of standards. And this section is being deleted, you know, it's tired in it entirely because the standards are being moved to a new chapter, 1831B. Uh, state law does allow jurisdiction to require that emergency shelters comply with operational standards. However, those standards do need to be objective standards. Uh, the draft ordinance includes many of the existing standards that are currently, uh, within the zoning ordinance. Um, some changes are being made to standards that were not, um, objective. For instance, the lighting standard is not an objective standard, so it's being revised. Um, the last standard shown on this slide, um, has been added, um, after the planning commission hearing and it was based on a recommendation by the planning commission to add a standard related to outdoor areas. Uh, the draft ordinance also includes, um, operational requirements for an operator of either the emergency shelter or the low-barrier navigation center. Um, the existing, um, ordinance or the existing requirements limit the number of individuals to 13. And staff has recommended increasing this to 16. Um, and this recommendation is based on, um, the fact that the number of homeless individuals in the county has increased significantly. The bed limit, um, was based on homeless population in 2009 and since that time, it has more than doubled. And these are, uh, additional requirements for a low-barrier navigation center. A low-barrier navigation center would be required to meet all of the, uh, standards, uh, that were recommended for an emergency shelter. And these additional requirements are all from, um, state law. So the planning commission held a discussion on this item in March. And then they held a public hearing on April twenty-third whereby a unanimous vote, they recommended, they adopted a resolution recommending that the council adopt the ordinance, implement the town's housing element, and they did include the new standard related to the outdoor spaces. So the options available to the council this evening, one, conduct a public hearing and consider the connection of the ordinance. Two, you could request modifications to the ordinance and request that staff return. Or three, you could direct staff to come back with additional information. That concludes my presentation. We'll go with questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Martha, for the great presentation and thorough staff report. Just since it looks like we have a lot of folks joining us for the first time tonight, the, the kind of way this works is we get a staff report on an item. Council will ask questions, then we'll open it up to public comment, which is when we invite anyone who wants to speak on an item to share their thoughts. Then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion, and then council will vote on the item. So we're going to start with questions from council members. I'd like to just start with two kind of high level like framing and clarification questions. One, just to confirm, this item is really just implementing state law, correct?
It's implementing state law, correct.
Great, thank you. And then two, just to make sure I understand, the zoning changes that are being made here really just allow a specific type of residential use in zones that are already zoned for residential uses, correct?
It allows the emergency shelter and then the low barrier navigation centers in zones that are allow commercial uses that allow.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you. Other questions from council members?
I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
If a residential shelter or something like the Project Home Key were proposed for a hotel or some property that's not within this district, could it still be considered? Or is this saying that they may only be located in this district?
So currently, it would only be that the new districts would be the MX one and the C one. They would continue to be allowed in the public semi-public facilities district as well. And the Project Home Key is, is a permanent supportive housing, so that's different than what we're, we're talking about here. This is really meant for a maximum of six months, so Project Home Key could be potentially allowed in other districts.
So it's temporary housing.
It's temporary.
Permitted, yep, for the unhoused, okay. And I should just add that the particular program, the Home Key program had specific language in it that allowed, that, that took away city control to make changes. So if the county wants to come in and buy a building for housing, it likely can do so in any.
Great, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, just you, the MX one district, how come that wasn't extended down to like you, this property or except fitness department, you know, just limited?
So the MX one district was established in twenty sixteen, and it was part of a Adam can probably speak more articulately to it than I, I can. But that, that was the boundaries that were considered at the time.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of context there, but I mean, there was a specific proposal for actually the cinema site at the time, which launched a sort of a effort by the city to sort of press pause and develop comprehensive regulations for that entire area of between Madera and Tamal Vista. Ultimately, with the idea of connecting housing from the, the new apartment complex, you know, Mount Tam now and making sort of a mixed use district, more economically vibrant, connecting that to a town center. So it's really tailored.
I think also in the discussion that, yeah, it's kind of a question. I think that the analysis was that the other lots that extend down to fitness, but not across the street there had already met their development like goals in that area. And so the MX wasn't like going to be able to affect those. And so it wasn't designed right, like this part of the discussion.
It was, it was, there's all, yeah, there's, it was tailored specifically to that area. There's a couple of interesting, unique aspects. That's one of the few areas in town that does not have a frontage road between the highway and the actual properties on the highway. So they extended entirely, you know, basically their backyards are right up to the highway. And I will say though, other areas that you're talking about further down Tamal Vista Boulevard, we've talked about it in terms of the housing element, but they are also slated for a mixed use district sometime in the future when time permits or other circumstances evolve where we want to focus on those, those efforts. So it's, part of it is, is a timing thing, just sort of. We needed to focus our attention there at that particular time and got that recently done to a new MX district.
Okay, thanks. And then on the, I know there was, there was planning commission meeting workshops where their notices provided, especially to neighbors across Tamal Vista, where it'd be most impactful if something did happen.
The, the notice was published in the, the IJ and then published on our, our website and our normal channels that we, that we use. And we did not send a hard copy notice to individuals within, within three hundred feet. And the reason why that's not typically the town's process when we're doing an ordinance amendment, this ordinance affects the majority of properties in town, both because the low barrier navigation center will be allowed in all C one parcels and MX one. And then reasonable accommodations apply to all residential properties. And so we try to be consistent with how we notice projects. Staff also did do a pop-up event at the town center and have some information on this zoning ordinance amendment, but we did not send.
And then one last one, the point in time count, that has, that has no bearing on this ordinance, right? Because I know the date is from two thousand and twenty-two, and I know Mirbek, myself, we did the two, two thousand and twenty-four count. I don't think that data will be out till June or so. It has no bearing.
It, it does to a certain extent because you need to demonstrate that the zone you're, you're designated to allow emergency shelters can meet the, the unmet housing needs. And and so we, we looked at the point time count to evaluate what the unmet housing needs were for Port Madera, which was three individuals based on the twenty twenty-two count. The twenty twenty-four counts has occurred, but as you know, the date is not yet available. So we did look at the twenty twenty-two count.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilmen?
I guess I have one. You know, at least in my time in San Francisco, a lot of this type of shelter usually was associated with church, churches and church groups. So we have many churches in town. I don't know why, how those are considered. Is it really just a zoning or are they allowed, would they be allowed to do these type of facilities through a different mechanism or?
So some of the churches in Port Madera are zone public, semi-public. So that district still does allow emergency shelters. So theoretically, you can have a church partner with someone to provide emergency shelter.
And, and, and when we say emergency, it's not like a earthquake emergency. They're purpose-built, long-term emergency care for people that are suffering from homelessness, right?
Yes, and then it does limit the maximum amount of time to six, six months. So it's not designed to be you know, long-term to that. But the goal really is when someone enters a shelter is that they're going to find permanent supportive housing.
Okay, thank you for helping clarify that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, just to clarify that both the emergency use and the low barrier, they are allowed both in MX one and C one.
Yes.
Okay, there's no difference between, correct.
Great, thank you. So with that, we'll open this up for public comment. So anybody who'd like to comment on this item is welcome to come up to our little podium here and share their thoughts. We'll do three minutes apiece. Does anybody who's with us in person tonight want to share any thoughts? Yeah, come on up. Thank you.
So the timings are interesting. I appreciate being able to hear this as well. As someone who's ran three thousand units of multifamily, class A, new development apartments, that's my bias I come in with. I'm a huge proponent of housing, particularly housing and services our community in MX one. I've spent an unbelievable amount of time understanding MX one and talked to the planners. I have looked through materials on the state level to say, we need to hit housing numbers. As a community member, I am very passionate about housing, but also I think there needs to be housing that is supporting the those in our community who need it the most. And as a, as a father of a daughter at Hall Middle School and a son at Cove, and someone who has dealt with family members in homeless situations, I heard a comment around the idea that could the city play an intermediary role of supporting use of that land purchase of the land or other uses of the land to move towards that direction. So I would say you'd have a lot of community support, my support as well, of looking at MX one for potential future housing opportunities.
Thank you. Anyone else want to give public comment on this item? Okay, and if none in person, we'll take a call from our folks who are on Zoom. Any hands up?
We have a hand raised from Lucinda Smith.
Great.
Five, Lucinda, when you're ready.
I realize that this is required by state law, but I wonder how Port Madera can afford it. And, and I, I know we have to make some changes, but being able to support a million dollars outlay is, is unreasonable. I mean, we just can't, I don't know a way that we can all do that. And I wonder if other towns are having the same struggle. And are they making the changes in their zoning laws or are they fighting it? And then I wanted to comment about the increase of folks to sixteen from thirteen. And I wonder if, how we've already accommodated the Home Key program, I think it's called Home Key program at the Port Madera Inn, where we accommodated, I believe, eighteen folks. And I, I wonder if, if that helps our count at all, and we could stay at the thirteen level rather than increase to the sixteen level. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lucinda. As soon as we close public comment, yeah, thank you. Any other hands up on Zoom?
No addition, I was raised on Zoom and no email or comment for this item.
Great, thank you. And it looks like no other public comment in the chamber tonight. So I'll just ask Martha, if you wouldn't mind, to just speak to that, that question about funding.
Yeah, so the town is not required to operate an emergency shelter. We just need to put the rules in place to allow the use. And generally, it's nonprofits that, that operate emergency shelters. And in Marin, there's a handful of shelters in Nevado and San Rattell, and they're all operated by nonprofits and Homeward Bound operates quite a few. So the town is not responsible for opening a shelter or operating a shelter or outlaying any, any finances.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to open this item up now to council discussion. Would anybody like to start us off? Okay, go ahead.
So I think we, because we are basically fulfilling state law, and I think we're doing it in a very responsible way for our town. It doesn't look like you're actually asking us for a vote since it's just an initial reading, correct? Or do we vote? Was it, okay, so I, I can definitely give this my support mainly because I have great trust in our planning commission. We have an excellent planning commission, and I know they thoroughly, I watched a part of the meeting, and I know they really thoroughly, thoroughly worked through this. The only concern I have is I would like to see a notification sent to people within three hundred feet, even though it's something that the town isn't, there's no real development. I just think as a courtesy, they should be noticed between this and the final reading of the ordinance, just to let them know what's going on. My, my, my personal opinion, if I lived in that area and this happened without me knowing it, I would feel like I got, you know, like I should have heard. And I, you can't count on them showing up at the public things or, you know, them coming out. I think we need to put a piece of mail in the mailbox.
Thanks, Pen. I'll go to Charles.
Yeah, so with the, to just chat about that public comment, I mean, to what end, right? Like, we notice to allow the public to come and make change, but this is a state mandated, mandated thing. So you're basically telling people, hey, you know, this is happening, you can show up and say something, but it won't have any effect, right? So you'd like to do that, right?
I, I think, I think public information is important and our willingness to be transparent and aggressively so, yes, here's what we're doing and you live nearby. I, I, I think we should do it. It doesn't mean you can't overrule me that I'm only one person, but that's my opinion.
I wouldn't seek to overrule. I just want to discuss about like the cost that the town would incur for that noticing with, with how beneficial, benefit to the town, right? And whether that's a thing or not, right? And you see it as a benefit and some of us may not, right? And so it's not countering or saying you're wrong. It's more just we've set those town kind of mandates and defined how we do noticing for, for these type of processes for specific reasons. And it's not just something that, like, you know, you can go out in the newsletter and other notices, but as a, the planning hearing has already occurred and the feedback time has already occurred, right? So I just want to also add that to the group to consider.
There was never a notice sent to the people who live nearby.
There was not a, a notice in the mail that was sent. And just to clarify, would you want a notice sent within three hundred feet of all the MX parcels and all the C one parcels? Because that would be a fairly large portion.
Yeah, I don't know. I was thinking just the MX, those are people who live across the street there.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we get thoughts from the, the rest of us and see if we move towards any sort of clarity? Do you want to go next, Fred?
Just before thoughts, just one question. Can I just get staff's input on the notice piece of it that we just talked about?
Yeah, I can speak to that. And I think it's a really important comment because you see us provide noticing on projects within three hundred feet around certain properties. And then ordinances that are townwide, state law actually defines how we provide notices. So if a, of an ordinance is affecting more than, I think it's a thousand parcels, we actually publish in a newspaper with general circulation. So that's the standard that we're meeting and complying with state law. And I think in this case, although there's one neighborhood that you're specifically concerned about, that may create an issue for future ordinances where we aren't going to call out a neighborhood within the full town that even though the ordinance is impacting the full town. So it creates a different standard. And so one thing we try to do is to be very consistent about how we do public notifications, especially when it's ordinances that really impact the town as a whole. With this particular effort, it's sometimes even if you get a notice in the mail, it's not going to activate you. So we did go to the farmer's market. We have put it out on our social media and our newsletter to try to get people to understand what's happening and, and to be involved. And we did talk to quite, you know, a few people about this issue. So in, as a standard, we would like to just make sure that we're noticing people the same way for all of our different services. So if it's specific to a property or it's a project, that's when we do that three hundred foot notification. And so when it's townwide, that's when we put it in the newspaper, because that really gets that broader audience.
Good question, Fred. Thank you.
That's good. I, I can support this. I think we have no choice. It sounds like, it sounds like it's state dictating, which might be crazy because it's state, state dictating what locals should be able to do. But I can support this. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. So a couple of things. I appreciate the hard work that the planning commission went to, to recraft some of the language and try to tailor this a little more to the spirit of Port Madera. And I thank the staff for putting those ideas into the new draft. You know, the, the planning commission really tried to take the broad and distant view of things that might happen. One of the things I learned from watching both of the planning commission meetings was that you know, organizations are moving away from just creating temporary shelter. And I think that's, you know, that's very wise. And I think that's one of the things that makes this sort of a housekeeping item, but not a likely item that people should worry about as actual development. And sometimes when you notice, you know, people, you know, the average person is not in the weeds of reading all of the ordinances or all of the, you know, the state statutes. And sometimes, you know, if you notice them on, on just a change, they think of it as that's, that's actually going to take place, not just it's able to take place, but they're planning it, it's coming next week. And there's sort of a panic, which, you know, we saw that happen a few months ago with Paradise Shopping Center when they, you know, a part of the parking lot was rezoned and everyone was like, they're taking away the gym. So I think that to be, you know, to notice people when things are actually you know, a development happening, I really support that. But I think that when it's so complex that you can't get it on a postcard that But I think that when it's so complex that you can't get it on a postcard that they could understand, that maybe sometimes, you know, it's it's just housekeeping, and it's not something that a lot of people are even, you know, going to be concerned about. So I think that, you know, fulfilling the mandate that the state requires, that we create the zones, there's, you know, there's nothing but support for that. So let's do it.
Could not have said it better myself. I mean, I I think I I like our practice of of noticing folks generally when there's a project. And then I think for smaller things like making minor tweaks to the zoning code that are required by state law, I think that's not something that we should be mailing notices about. And I think frankly, the fact that we publish that in a newspaper is fantastic. I think I'm guessing it's probably in our newsletter that goes directly to people's inboxes as well. So I I really resonate with what Pat said about sort of radical transparency. And I think actually Corder Madera really does a great job at that and sets the standard there, and I know that we'll continue to do so. So I appreciate the the discussion here, but I'm I'm more than happy to support this item as as written.
But I just say one little.
Please do. Yeah, of course.
So I agree, you guys are doing a great job and informing the town about what's going on and informing the big overarching community. But when that specific project comes in, if that specific project comes and you notify the three hundred people within three hundred feet, they're going to come and get involved and realize that the zoning on those properties right across the street from them was changed. So even if we wait and do it after the fact, I think we should just notify those people that this is a thing, because I don't want to be having to defend the fact that we did this without notifying. I mean.
You can't change it, right? Like, it's state law. Like, what could you have done?
But I think we can notify them, even even though there's no room for their input at this point due to state law, we've had to do this. So we have decided to make this the area where if there is a need for shelters and if they can be afforded by the whatever, 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 they could be placed in this area. And I just think maybe just now me saying this and 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 notifying, we're notifying now the public that, you know, this is what's happening, and it's state law, we can't really do anything about it. But I think, you know, I'm in the real estate business, and disclosure is everything. As long as you disclose, you did what you could. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we're disclosing to those people I know who live on that street, who really care about their neighborhood and their communities. I just don't want them to feel blindsided. That's it. Can I say just one? Happy to be in the minority on this one.
One one thing that I think is really, really important here is, you know, if we're seeing that, and this is this is general, what society does in general is that they immediately assume that if someone was homeless, they're bad, and it's going to take down their property values, et cetera. Do people become homeless for many, many different reasons? I have members of my own family who just lost a job or had a divorce or whatever, and that's how they ended up there. It wasn't drugs, it wasn't alcohol, it wasn't anything bad, it was just life and bad luck. So I think that this idea, I I I wouldn't want to perpetuate the idea that we better let them know because the bad people are going to be located here.
Say that, Rosa.
I I know, and I'm not saying that. But what I'm saying is if if it's a disclosure that has to happen, then you're disclosing disclosing it because maybe you don't want to buy a house there because it's going to be that. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to have that kind of idea.
Let's hear from the town attorney first. Town attorney always comes first.
You know, I'm just gonna say that we're getting a little bit far afield from the agenda item, which is whether or not to introduce this ordinance. I think we're getting into a broader discussion of our notice requirements. We comply with all state notice requirements. We do have in ordinance that we we provide further notice for certain types of things, which is generally the projects and that. This could be brought back as a discussion about whether we want to consider changing or I shouldn't say, first of all, we go above and beyond what the state law requires. State law, we consider a minimum. We post our agendas, every agenda item, staff report is on there. We frequently will do webpages about big projects. We also have in our municipal code some notice provisions. So I think if this is a discussion, the council will want to take another look at what we require for certain things. I think we can bring it back in that context, because I think it is certainly an issue that council members are passionate about and want to discuss. But I think we're a little bit getting on the agenda, and we should probably rein ourselves back in.
Thank you very much, Amy. Appreciate the, it's always helpful. We can, I know we can get kind of into a conversation. So I think I think we've all shared our thoughts on both the the substance of the item and also, you know, maybe some ancillary direction around our thoughts on noticing, which is great. Do we have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I will so move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second?
Great, thank you. Did I take public comment on this? Yes.
We don't need to read read it. We can just say, the ordinance has its.
We read the item when it was called?
Um, I did not actually read out the the title of the ordinance.
Okay, you want to read it out then?
Yeah, so so Pat had moved that we introduce, let's see, this is amendments to portions of Title eighteen zoning of the Corder Madera Municipal Code to implement programs in the Corder Madera housing elements related to emergency shelters, low barrier navigation centers, and applications for reasonable accommodation.
Okay. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Avasio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item five B tonight, which I think will be a fun one for any gov students here. This is first reading and possible introduction of an ordinance. I'm just gonna say basically cleaning up the Corder Madera Municipal Code, addressing some outdated items, and we will read the full title if there's a motion to introduce it, but I will turn it over now to our town attorney.
Good evening, Mayor Beckman, councilmembers, Amy Ackerman, town attorney. So the legislature makes lots of laws that bind individuals, but the town also has its own municipal code, which are town laws. And some of them regulate how the town operates, but some of them are actually laws that bind citizens, and that if you violate those laws, it can be either a misdemeanor or you can get a citation, which you have to pay a fine. So this year at the town's retreat, one of the projects in this year's work plan is to do some code cleanup. People rarely go back and try to clean up their laws, and that's one of the projects we're taking on. I thought it was appropriate to start with chapter nine, because it's a very outward facing code. In other words, it regulates people's conduct. So we we are doing that tonight with this ordinance. And what this ordinance in particular does is, first of all, our chapter is called Peace, Safety and Morals. We really don't expect to regulate people's morals, so we are the title to public conduct, because that's what we care about. And apparently, in nineteen fifty-three, the city council was quite concerned about fortune telling and astrology and tomology, clairvoyance, spiritualism, phrenology, if I don't even know what that is, and allied practices. So we don't enforce these ordinance now. I don't think we lawfully couldn't do that. So we are going to repeal it, which means it's no longer a crime in Corder Madera. Astrology. The next item that we're going to do is we had a whole long ordinance on regulating carnival services, fairs and amusement places. I'm not even sure what that means. And we don't need this ordinance anymore. We do have a permit process where you get permits for special events. And we make sure you have a traffic plan, so if you're not going to block traffic, and we make sure that, you know, we have enough safety and insurance, so we don't need to to restrict the carnivals and the services anymore. We also have a a chapter that deals with dangerous weapons. State has really taken over regulating weapons and, you know, to the extent allowed by the U.S. Supreme Court, which is, you know, an issue, but it's working its way through the courts. So if the state law regulates it, it occupies what we call an occupiers' field, so the town can't regulate. So we need to get rid of old outdated ordinances that we no longer have the right to enforce. We are keeping two provisions of that definition of dangerous weapons, which is a broad definition to include BB guns and other things. And we are keeping our ordinance that prohibits the discharge of these dangerous weapons in Corder Madera, because I believe there's no law that says, there's no ruling yet that says we can't keep our law. There are some state laws which are similar. You cannot negligently discharge a firearm. But this is a broader prohibition, which we'd like to to keep. We just wanted to assure council that I did consult with Chief Thornton about this, and he's comfortable with this. So that's our item tonight, is to introduce this ordinance, which is going to get rid of a lot of outdated material in our code.
Thank you very much, Amy. And it's not often that local government gets to be kind of funny. So thank you for for bringing that to us. Any questions from council members on this item?
I got two quick ones. Just clarified, peace officer includes federal law enforcement.
He's a really broad term.
Okay. And then the other question here is, there's a version here about exemption, and it applies to shooting gallery operated, conducted, and licensed pursuant to the ordinances of the town. We don't allow that. We we don't allow shooting galleries or shooting ranges, right, in the town of Corder Madera? I I we don't have one. I'm not proposing to get one, but.
One, I don't know that.
I was just wondering by ordinance, if if we prohibit.
Zoning code and figure out if it's a a use. But it would certainly be subject to conditional use.
I just went to the 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 store, and they have like a laser shooting gun. It's not having a shooting range. It's not even.
No, this is talking about discharge of weapons.
Yeah.
Again, I was just wondering.
Yeah, we don't currently have one, and I would have to ask my planning experts about if it's banned or not banned.
Is it only unlawful discharge? So therefore, if you basically zone it and allow it, create a facility to support it, then it's a lawful discharge of it?
Maybe we flag this for offline follow-up for council members. Very unlikely. Any other questions from council members on this item?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one note. We will be coming back to you with another another item on chapter nine, which is conduct on public property. We're gonna do a little cleanup of that. And then right now, parks, what's permitted in parks is kind of a subsection, very outdated, so we're moving it into its own chapter, updating it, but it's going to the Parks and Recreation Commission for comment first in May, but it will come back to you. So stay tuned.
Awesome. Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council members, we'll open this item up to public comment. So if anybody would like to comment on this item, please step right up to our podium here. We'll do three minutes apiece as always. Anyone in the public tonight want to share a comment? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, it's great to have my first meeting. It's so fun. The fact that I know this is clear claim in phrenology is the study of the skull and its impact on your personality and sense of self. So thank you for taking that out. It's kind of crazy. But if you are in the coming months, going to be understanding or kind of working through, I love this phrase, amusements, amusement spaces. Obviously, being someone who's interested in bringing more amusement, making connections to our community, MX one is not zoned for farmer's markets or for food trucks or for outdoor activities. So I think that'd be something I would encourage the council to consider under the next number of months. If you're opening this, you have more of those amusement spaces available in the next one.
Thank you very much. Any other in-person public comment tonight from anyone? No, and seeing none, we'll open this up.
No, wait, I I have one.
Okay, come on up. Thank you.
I'm an artist, and I want to back Charlie. I think we should be a colorful hair, and I think we should cater to artists. When you get to be a billionaire, what's the first thing you do? You run out, you buy, and you spend a piece of art. But we're essential to the community, and I I support Charlie.
Thank you very much. All right. If there's no other in-person public comment, we will go to Zoom public comment. Do we have any hands up on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll close public comment and bring this item back to council for discussion. Any thoughts?
Charles? I absolutely love this one. This is great. It's interesting, I think, not only from just like the historical and just cleanup and just like reducing total amount that someone might have to go through, but it also shows how temporal the decisions we make are and how, you know, where the short versus long play of what we're deciding and how it impacts the the community, right? And and then also how sometimes we think, oh, we'll come back and circle back in two years and think about this, and then fifty, you know, a hundred years later, we're like, whoops. Right? So I just think and and the fact that the the students were here and that it, you know, it it shows like and is embracing like like a real dialogue about governance and making the ordinances was a extra special privilege that I wanted to acknowledge. And I think Amy and her group have really fostered that. And so I also like to see that occur tonight. So I just wanted to say that. And of course, I can you're welcome to do it. Support the introduction of it, but I also want to allow others to speak to the the item too.
Thank you for the wise insights. Rosa, any thoughts?
I'm just down with phrenology.
I I love this ordinance too, and I'm feeling like we might have gotten away with something back in the old co-op preschool days. We threw our annual carnival, and we had fortune tellers and astrologers.
Right.
Who knew we were breaking the law?
Right. A lot of bootleg astrology.
Any thoughts? I'm good with it.
Great, I am as well, Amy. Thank you so much for doing this. This is weirdly gratifying to be able to go back through the municipal code and just like take out the little stuff that did not belong in there. So thank you for helping turn the municipal code into something that we can all be proud of. Would anybody like to make a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I would like to make a motion to introduce this ordinance.
And I didn't read it out earlier, so you're gonna have to.
I would like to, the introduction of ordinance amending Title nine, peace, safety and morals of the Corder Madera Municipal Code, CMMC, by amending the name of the Title nine to read public conduct and repeating chapter nine point oh zero, fortune telling nine point one zero carnival, circuses, fairs and amusement places, and amending chapter nine point one six deadly weapons. Thank you.
I will second.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Avasio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to item five C tonight, which is first reading and possible introduction of an ordinance amending Title two, essentially raising the town council stipend for the first time in, I think, twenty-three years. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Great. Thank you, mayor and council members. Back at our strategic planning session in, I think, the end of January. Actually, it was Amy who discussed some changes in state legislation in two thousand and twenty-three, where the legislatures found it appropriate to allow for general law cities to, which had been regulated by the state in terms of how much salary council members and general law cities could actually earn. They had changed the law to allow general law cities to now consider potential increases to the salaries of council members. Really, under the guise and and really with the intention of acknowledging, one, the three hundred dollars maximum salary per council member per year was potentially an obstacle for some individuals who may consider or want to consider the arduous and difficult task of becoming a council member and all the time and energy that goes into doing all the work that all of you do and other council members do throughout the state of California. And saw that as really a potential obstacle, but precluding potential individuals who may have significant opportunity costs with doing such work. In in other words, they again, didn't have the economic means to do so. And so this was really an idea of of opening up and allowing potential new candidates and new individuals to potentially apply for the honor of being a council member. And so at this time, as a number of other cities are considering this, the same change to their ordinances, we're asking the council to consider an ordinance that would amend Title two an ordinance that would amend Title Two, um, uh, to increase salaries of town council members. This would not apply immediately. This would apply to, um, uh, council members starting after the next general election, which would happen in November and sort of take effect if approved, um, um, uh, January first, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and so just some background, uh, the town of Corredum Dara initially enacted, uh, an ordinance in nineteen eighty-six, which lasted through two thousand and one, um, uh, approving salaries of two hundred dollars a month for council members. Um, in two thousand and one, that was increased to three hundred dollars a month. And, um, additionally, the mayor, uh, received a fifty dollar a month extra, uh, as the mayor. Um, that has been in place since the last, I guess, twenty-three years. Um, and hasn't been adjusted since that time. So still, as you all know, but as the public should be aware, three hundred dollars a month is the, the stipend or salary that council members currently receive. The ordinance, um, you know, as described in the staff report, uh, mostly for the public. Many hours are put into not only these meetings and reading the staff reports and making decisions, but there's a number of other obligations that our council members have, going to committee meetings in county, sitting on other boards, um, and really, uh, there's a lot of work that goes into just staying abreast of all of the different policies, um, and a lot of the different issues that sort of affect the town, um, both within the town itself, reaching out to constituents, but also outside of the town as well. Uh, organizations or, or we have, uh, joint power authorities, there's MWPA, there's the Transportation Authority, Marin, and so on and so forth. Um, so the proposed ordinance in front of you this evening would amend, uh, Title Two, Section, uh, it would be two point oh eight, oh one oh, related to town council salaries. And it would fix the sum of, um, uh, council salaries at nine hundred and fifty dollars per month. Again, the current salary is three hundred dollars per month. Um, it would also make that equal across the board. So there would not be any difference between the mayor's salary and the rest of the council members. And also just making explicit that a council member may waive any and all, any or all of the compensation permitted by this section if the council member so decides. And, um, yes, the council, uh, can consider other dollar amounts. Um, uh, to nine fifty, but cannot exceed nine fifty per state law. Um, and again, uh, the, uh, this would equate to, uh, a fiscal impact. Actually, near twenty-four, twenty-five, about seventeen thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. And that's about, uh, and on an annual basis, moving forward, if this was to be approved, about thirty-five thousand dollars per year. So with that, I conclude the presentation. I'll see if you have anything to add to that, um, and available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council members on this item? No question. Yeah, Fred?
Just one, I know Marksburg passed this on, um, their meeting.
Introduced it, yes. They introduced it on May first last week. And I think, um, we'll be seeing other cities take this up in the near future as well. Um, just given, again, the reasons stated in the, um, at the beginning of the presentation about inclusive, you know, making council member seats more inclusive and drawing from a greater pool of individuals.
And that was in nine fifty, correct, that they passed theirs?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned before, if we don't want to take the money for whatever reason, we would waive it, but that money would stay within the general fund. So it's not, when I was on Park and Rec, my ten dollars stipend, I used to just donate to the community foundation. That can't be done, right?
Well, you can take it, you donate it.
No, no, that part I know. What I'm saying is.
It would go back to the general fund.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's it.
And I don't have any questions. Thank you. Um, okay, so we will open this item up for public comment. Anybody who would like to comment on this item, please come right on up to the podium here.
You bet, Eli.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I passionately think this should be put to a vote and the residents of Corredum Dara should decide that. Not that you're not worth it. But we have issues going on in Washington DC with people holding on to their high-paid jobs. Let's keep things pure as possible here. Because I'll tell you, you just up the salary enough and we're going to get all kinds of people coming in just for the self. So let the people decide. Give us the vote. One of the things that is so important is when people vote on something, then they can only blame themselves and they'll stop accusing honest politicians, if there are any, okay? But I absolutely think we as the people should make that decision. And I want to ask you all a question. The rumor is that we have council members on medical and that the people are paying medical bills. Is there any truth to that? Uh, rumor, Mr. Adam, uh, Adam, can you answer that? Are they, are we, are we, uh, are they on medical bills? I mean, not medical bills, but are we, are the taxpayers giving the council medical? Anybody getting medical?
Happy to have staff respond to your question after your, after your comments finished.
Pardon?
Happy to have staff respond to your question after your comment is finished.
Okay, my comments finished.
Okay, thank you very much. Or, no, you, you can go ahead and sit down. We're gonna take any other public comment and then we'll have staff to respond.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you. Yeah, please. Thank you.
I feel like I'm talking too much. I'm hearing myself.
This is a, this is a pleasant change of pace for us.
I would violently disagree, not violently, I would strongly disagree with Tiffany. Um, and I'll tell you why. The amount of time to build together both the amount of paper, the amount of publication, the amount of evaluation, I think about that scope of spend for my city versus the delta of what we're asking for in this. I defer to the discretion of the people that we elected to make the right decisions for appropriation. One, and two, having worked half my career for a nonprofit salary, I know how hard it is to be in Marin. And the fact that we're investing more money in the overall quality of those who are leading our communities, I, I couldn't agree more. So I'd rather put about things like bonds, sort of large investments of spend versus something like this. That's my point of view.
Thank you very much. Any other in-person public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll take public comment via Zoom. Uh, Lauren, do we have any hands up?
We have, um, two hands raised. We'll start with Lucinda Smith.
Thank you.
Lucinda, go ahead. When you're ready.
Well, first I want to say I think council members don't get paid enough, no matter how much it is. However, I don't think that it is proper for the council members to be voting on this. I kind of have to go with the previous comments that it's more something the people should vote on. Um, I think that the increase, the max to nine fifty, doesn't have to be met. And it would be more palatable, I believe, to people at large to have a more modest increase and maybe tie it to something that is, uh, indexed. Um, cost of living or something like that. I know that complicates payroll and stipending, but uh, this is a huge increase from three hundred and I think that's a step that would be improper for the current council to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And one more hand raised from Patty Stoller. Oh, um, she put her hand down. Never mind, she changed her mind.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll close public comment.
No, she put it back.
Okay, great.
Patty, go ahead whenever you're ready. Not sure if he's not able to unmute. But we do have, um, I do have the email, um, open. So Patty, it looks like you are unable to unmute yourself. So, um, you can submit your comment via email and I'll upload it to the website once it becomes available.
Great, thank you. Alrighty, um, so we'll close public comment on this item. I'll just ask staff, um, if they wouldn't mind, if please respond to the resident's question about whether, what kind of medical benefits are available to council members.
At reunion, so we can, we can self-pay if we need to. We can actually do it if cows.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I don't have perfect information on that. I know there are instances, uh, council members are eligible, for example, to um, join the cowper's, um, retirement benefits program that are able to get, um, a, um, if they serve a certain number of years, can be vested into that program and do receive some, um, retirement benefits of post, um, service of, of the required eligible number of years in there. I think that's five years. I have to look at that again. So I think there is some, um, medical costs that are paid for, um, by the town. I don't have the exact numbers. I can tell you it's not like, it's not comparable to what an employee needs to live them, but.
Yeah, it, it was more in the past and that was part of, uh, we, we fixed some of those issues, uh, because it was, it was in perpetuity and it was part of our discussions about our liabilities. And so it was corrected to be more fair to the service. But it, it's also, my understanding is like, you know, with cowpers, it's, you can go on to be a supervisor, whatever, and they're tracking your total services as a, as a certain person in all those years and the total salaries they're aggregating across all your service is calculated in what it means to be, and you actually pay in as a member. So it's not like it's just given to you and you're actually, yeah. And then with the, like, you know, uh, during COVID, the right, like, someone lost their job and they were on the council, they could pay money, basically the same price, the, basically through cowper's, you pay your total. It's not reimbursed by the town. It would be a single person electing to pay through that because it's negotiated right through cowper's. So that's, that, that's what I, uh, have come to understand about it. But in previous, previous council in the past, it was not the same. So that was a discussion many, many years ago about that.
Is it okay if I comment?
No.
Okay, so, uh, we will bring this item back to the council for deliberation and a possible vote to introduce, uh, this ordinance now. Anybody want to start us off?
Um, yeah, so I'll just say that, um, for the cost of a vote, this small of an amount, it would be actually less, uh, uh, financially prudent for uh, the town to take something this small to vote. Um, that aside, I will say that this amount has not been raised in twenty-three years and nobody out there is working at a job and not getting a raise for twenty-three years. That just is not done. So, um, I, I do not think that it's an inappropriate, um, thing for us to receive a raise. And I also do believe that we are within the law as a body to vote for ourselves if we so choose. Um, so with that said, I do support, um, increasing our pay. I'm somewhat flexible, but I would say I don't think, I think it would be perfectly appropriate, given that it's been twenty-three years, that we raise it to the maximum rate because we have no idea if the state is going to increase that amount again for another twenty-three years or another thirty-three years or whatever. So I think that, um, we are well justified in increasing our pay to nine fifty a month.
Yeah, and I would just clarify that the, the nonsense state law that were allowed up to three fifty ha- haven't been changed since nineteen eighty-four. Corredum Dara just was under it for a while and then went to the maximum. So I think it's really indicative of how stagnant the stipends have been for forty-something years. Yeah, forty years.
And if I may add one more point, I, I also wanted to comment on the timing. The timing of doing this now as well, um, was we're, we're have a general election coming up. Again, it's going to take effect until after the general election. Um, but there's a call for putting in your filing, your papers, your paperwork to become a council member. I think that it's in June coming up now. So we wanted to make sure that we got this in front of the council for consideration before we open up the filing and people can, can sort of decide now with that additional, uh, increase in salary, whether or not it's viable thing for them to run for and to be on a council.
So, I mean, can I speak now?
Yeah, uh, so, so for me, it's not really making a decision about myself. It's about what I think is best for the town, given any elected official moving forward, because ultimately, whether I choose to run and would receive this or not, isn't really what's affecting the decision. What I can say is, based on our experience, and we've shared it before when we asked you to look at this, was some of us have barriers and basically are sacrificing family time or other things. And so to be accused that somehow this is actually any kind of amount of money to survive here and like we're benefiting ourselves is insulting. Um, and so the only thing I would say is, if you think that that's ultimately what my decision is, you could vote me out if you feel like it. Good luck. Um, but you know, that's really my response and I actually think it'll open it up for, I don't know, artists in the future, if they choose to, you know, consider it, to understand that there's actually like, they, they're getting paid to do a good job. Um, you know, instead of basically people that have no barriers to basically, and all the money to afford a, a campaign and to spend all this extra time at night and sacrifice and, and provide with no reward or any kind of, you know, it's hard to justify that for certain people in community. And that's what we're talking about in why we're trying to enable that it, it, you know, when you're saying, hey, I'm either gonna be home tonight with the kids or I'm gonna go do this other thing, how you can explain to a wife about why a, a family member here in this town could do it versus, you know, someone that doesn't have those kind of commitments. And I think it's important to understand that before you make value judgments across the board about what's really occurring. Um, and so I, I just wanted to share that and we've shared it before and not everyone's able to attend these because, you know, they have other things to do with their time. Um, and so I just wanted to share that with everyone. Um, because for me, it's not really a decision about me and, and it's long overdue as we, as we know. And I think it will lead to better governance to pay people to govern. Because, you know, it stops just being about special projects and why you would sacrifice your time. And to understand that you're getting paid to do service for the community. So that's, and I think the, the full expense of it is totally justifiable. Recently, you know, in staffing, we've made decisions about hiring bonuses that are similar to the entire council and the total quality and review that the council makes in a year versus one staff member, I can definitely make a value judgment that they're of equal weight or greater. So I think it's a wise decision. So I just wanted to share that. Um, but I, I can support it at the full rate and, uh, you know, I look forward to seeing the quality of the candidates that come to work for it.
Thank you very much, Charles. Thoughts down here?
Yeah, I can support it at the nine fifty rate also. Um, I think a lot of comments are already made, but it's kind of standard. Inflation is a key one. Rosa said it well, you know, how many people haven't had a raise in twenty-three years? That's like nobody. These people get cost of living increases where in there. Um, there's no material impact on the budget. I think it's another thirty-some odd thousand a year. I think also throws out the equity, um, part piece of it also, does it open up more people that would be willing to run for town council and get involved, um, in government affairs at that level. The one thing that resonates with me is there was a council member in Marksburg, his name was Tom Carroll. He passed away, I think, a couple of months ago. Kevin, Kevin Carroll, thank you. Um, and this came up at their meeting where he was an independent contractor. He drove a cab and that's how he made his money. But every time he was at a council meeting or TAM meeting or MCCM meeting, he wasn't making money. Um, it won't supplement it dollar for dollar, but I think it does help out as much as it can. The one question I would have for staff, and I think we should look into this, and it's a waterfall effect. If we do pass this tonight for ourselves, I know commissions, I think Planning Commission, I know Park and Rec, I don't know whoever, they're getting a stipend, stipend, I know. I know, um, Park Rec is getting ten dollars a month, and I know it's more volunteer than anything else. But I think we should look into that also, because again, and again, I'm not talking about going from ten dollars to two hundred. But I think we need to look at that, which I think you guys should come back to us with something, some recommendations, to see if we should be increasing those also. Um, it's only appropriate that it's a domino that we're doing for ourselves, we should be doing it across the board. But again, I can support this with the nine fifty.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say I can support it, so if I can make a motion or do you want to make some comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to share my thoughts as well, and I think a number of council members really hit it on the head, but I think we have a huge equity issue in California. Um, with the fact that people are not compensated remotely for their time to participate in public service. Uh, you know, we've seen in Corder Madera's recent history, we've had elections that were uncompetitive, where we couldn't find more people to run, we had seats open. Now fortunately, we got lucky and we got two fantastic council members out of it, uh, but I do think that just fundamentally, when you can't find people to fill seats in elected office, that's a huge flashing warning light for democracy. I think that's really a big problem. Uh, you know, public, public service is a privilege, it should not be reserved for the privileged, and I think that's the issue that we're up against here. I have personally tried to, you know, recruit intelligent, qualified, thoughtful residents to run for town council or for our boards and commissions in Corder Madera, and people tell me, I can't, I've got young kids. I can't afford that childcare, I can't take that time off of work. Um, and you really realize that asking people to give so much of their time for free is not something that many people can afford. So if we want people to be able to serve on the town council or to be able to serve on our boards and commissions and give back to their community, there's gotta be something in it that makes it possible for them. I'd also note that even if we adopt this thing as, as written, which I absolutely think we should, the average amount of time that a council member spends on their council duties, that comes out to like nine bucks an hour. It's better than like the two bucks an hour we get now, but minimum wage in California is sixteen bucks an hour. So it's still, it's like, you know, i- it's still a huge donation of, of time and bandwidth, and we do it because we love our community. Uh, you know, but, but you know, but, but it's a burden for, for, for at least a number of us. Um, and I, and I think, you know, I won't say that, that public service should never be a burden, but it doesn't have to be a huge, it doesn't have to be something that's actually a barrier to people getting involved. Um, so I, I absolutely support this as written, I appreciate my, my colleagues' comments up here, and I would also just like to highlight again uh, the common sense, it did come up, uh, putting something on a ballot, like having an election for, for an item is actually quite expensive, it costs tens of thousands of dollars, and I think would most likely, in this case, cost more than the actual, uh, the stipend increase here, so it just wouldn't make sense, uh, for me to support that as a steward of public funds. So, um, I'm gonna en- entertain a motion.
I would introduce, uh, the motion that we, uh, introduce ordinance amending Title II Administration Personnel of the Corder Madera Municipal Code by amending section two point oh eight point oh one oh of chapter two point oh eight to increase the salaries of town council members.
I can second it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearings tonight, and we're gonna move on to our business items, the first of which is six A. Uh, this is discussion and possible action to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign a reimbursement agreement between the town and Corder Madera and the Marin Municipal Water District for the Granada Drive Pipeline Replacement Project. Thank you, Amy. And I will turn it over to Zach.
We have Chris on, on Zoom.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thanks Mayor Beckman and Town Council. Sorry, can't be there in person, just recovering from a cold, so didn't want to share my germs. So I'll be providing a brief summary of the reimbursement agreement with Marin Municipal Water District um, for the Granada Drive Pipeline Replacement Project. Uh, let me share a quick map here. Uh, okay, so just to provide some background, um, Public Works had planned for several years to resurface the roads in the Marina Estates neighborhood. Um, and we notified, you know, all utility owners several times about this planned work. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we planned to include resurfacing the roads, um, shown on this map uh, in the twenty twenty-two Road Resurfacing Project Phase Two. Uh, however, in March, MMWD reached out to the town and requested that we postpone the paving work so that they could replace their water mains, which were at the end of their design life and had started to fail. Um, there were, there were three, at least three major, um, water main bursts, like in a few month period, so um, that work needed to happen. Um, so Public Works agreed to remove the roads from our paving projects uh, with the understanding that, uh, MMWD would include the paving in their um, water main replacement project. And so the town and MMWD have been collaborating, um, to create the terms of the reimbursement agreement as well as, um, plans and specifications for the joint project. Uh, there are several terms for the reimbursement agreement listed in the staff report, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but um, I think the most important one is that, um, MMWD agreed to pay for fifty percent of the cost uh, to resurface the road, the full width of the road where they are trenching. Um, so that amounts to eighty-two percent of the highlighted roads seen below. Um, and so that ends up equating to MMWD paying for forty percent of the overall cost to resurface the streets in Marina Estates. Um, so it's, it's a great cost savings to the town, um, despite the inconvenience of the year-long delay, um, you know, for staff and residents. Uh, MMWD recently opened bids for the project and Majoran Gelati was the low bidder. Uh, the big costs for paving related items were almost identical to what our um, engineer's estimate was, so we're confident in the bid results. And, uh, construction on the project should begin in the next few weeks, we haven't heard the exact date, um, but uh, they're gonna do some outreach to residents, letting them know about the start, and we'll do some on our end. Um, and then the road resurfacing portion of the project's gonna be at the very end, um, still waiting to find out exactly when, but it could be, uh, October, November. Uh, so that's all I have as far as this item, but, uh, there any questions on that?
Great, thank you very much, Chris. Any questions from council members?
Just one quick, I'm worth the funding coming from for our portion?
Um, the funding, I think, was already set aside for that previous paving project, so uh, it's coming out of the Measure F, uh, fund.
Okay, and then we prep excess from that, right? Cause I think, if I can remember, I thought Public Works thought that was gonna commit about a million eight way back when, so I don't know how much was budgeted, if there's access there, just to get that out there. Thanks.
Sure.
You, Fred, any other questions? I just had two quick ones, Chris. Um, first, just wanna confirm, so tell me if I'm thinking about this right, is it, is it kind of fair to conceptualize this as saying like the town and the taxpayers are getting essentially fifty percent off the, the cost of this road work as compensation for having to delay for Marin Waters work? In the sense that Marin, Marin Waters covering half of that paving work that we were originally gonna do ourselves, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, cause normally the water district would have to do some restoration around their trench, but definitely not the whole road, so it's, it's kind of a benefit for, for both the district and us.
Fantastic, thank you. And then other question, just out of curiosity, I have full faith in your guys' ability to pull this off, and I'm just curious, have we done a joint project like this before, where, where we're kind of like funneling in our work with something done by like a utility, for example?
Um, I mean, I, I've only been in the town for four years and I'm not aware of anything, sometimes we work, I mean, we run the sewer district, so we have projects hand in hand with sanitary in town, but outside utility agencies normally not. We, we notify them of our paving and a lot of times they'll come in and do their work first. But I think this is the first time we've had an actual joint project.
Got it, thank you. Okay, those, uh, those are my only questions.
Yeah, but to, to, to further on that, right, like, my understanding, Chris, is with the sewer district, right, with the newer software that we've implemented, right, it is that we can find synergies of the paving product projects and the undergrounding o- in the streets, right, and like, you know, while we might not have been able to align the PG&E discussion for Casa Blaina is one where we're trying, and then there was the one that, like, uh, I've heard RJ speak to it and trying to align that as a future, like, policy goal.
Right.
Um, but it is tricky, right? I- is that, that, that's part of it, you still, your task and a policy, you always look for these kind of synergies, Chris?
Yeah, definitely, cause I mean, the last thing we wanna do is pave a road and then have someone come in and tear it open, um, which would have been the case if we had carried out the paving project last year in Marina Estates. So we always give utilities at least a year or two notification of our paving projects, just with the hopes that they can evaluate and, and get whatever work they need done first.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Any other questions? And if not, we'll open this up for public comment, so any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please step right up to our podium here. And I'm not seeing
Well, I'm gonna do it.
Wonderful, there we go.
Was it Gelati that did the paving job?
Yes, that, well, that's the low bidder.
Okay, that was about two months ago, there are grass coming up already through it.
Oh, you're asking about a different project, I'm sorry. Whi- which project are you asking about?
I'm asking about who did the paving job of the roads in Corder Madera.
Okay, we'll come back to that after.
Isn't that what this is about?
Yeah.
But what is it about?
This is about a paving project that has not been done yet.
Okay, see, I, you know, we have young people, we have them, uh, they don't understand. I think there needs to be some simplification done so our young people can get interested in it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any other in-person public comment. Do we have any hands up on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom and no email comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close the public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion.
I have one quick comment and then I can make the motion. Chris, I appreciate, I know you said MMWD is gonna reach out to residents and we are also, we just make sure we get that messaging out, because I get a lot of questions from residents in Marina Estates, because the streets have been torn up for, I think, over a year, so more messaging, um, would be great, I'd appreciate it. And with that, I'm gonna make the motion authorize the Director of Public Works to sign reimbursement agreement between town of Corder Madera and MMWD for the Granada Drive Pipeline Replacement Project.
Great. Uh, any other, uh, comments before we take a vote? Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Councilmember, um, Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you, and we will move on to our last business item, which is six B. Consideration and possible approval of a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-two thousand dollars to implement the artwork recommendations for the new town hall provided by the Town Hall Artwork Ad hoc Committee, and I will turn it over to Steph.
Great, thank you, uh, Mayor and council members. Um, this is a, clearly an indication that we are very close to actually moving into our new town hall, so I'm very excited to be able to share with you sort of the culmination of the work of our Town Hall Artwork Ad hoc Advisory Subcommittee for the new town hall. So i- if you recall back in August of twenty twenty-three, um, I had, uh, asked the council to, um, appoint two members, uh, to start to work on really developing um, call it the artwork or just the interior spaces, um, uh, knowing that it would be very important when we open this building to really have something that made, uh, the space feel more comfortable and really more connected to our community, rather than just a, a building with blank walls, and it's beautiful, I think everyone will see it, but how can we make this feel, um, uh, you know, the, the spaces within it, especially the, the public spaces um, feel more connected and, and really have our community feel attached to it. So we embarked on that in August of twenty twenty-three. Councilmember, uh, Ravazio and Councilmember Beckman joined us, we, we've met about once a month, I would say, Rebecca Udisay here from, uh, R and R Design Studio, um, sort of was the facilitator of our monthly meetings. Um, Rebecca Vaughn, who's not here, she's celebrating her birthday this evening, was very instrumental in helping us organize as well. And, and by the way, I'm gonna open this up to both of our council members if they have anything to add at the end of this, but um, y- you know, we, we started really on a process of collecting pieces of work from our community, we did a call for, for artwork, um, on our newsletter and, and ask people to send in whatever they had that related to Corder Madera. Um, John Ahale, we brought in, who as many of you know, um, has been instrumental in really archiving the town's history and our heritage as a, as a community. Um, um, and, and we got a great response of, from our community, just in terms of recommendations of artists and, um, other images and imagery that we could actually use. Uh, and so, uh, that was in the fall. I, I think we provided an update back in March of this year on sort of the progress and the direction that the committee was going, and it was really about, I think, early on, maybe in the fall, we decided that as a group some of the themes we really wanted to focus on was Corder Madera history, um, heritage, and, and, but also really importantly, the natural beauty and the environment, uh, that we all sort of get to enjoy on a daily basis um, as Corder Madera residents or employees, and sort of serves the backdrop for our daily lives, you know, here, so that, uh, was the direction we sort of tasked, um, while the group sort of worked through, so we got a collection of material, then there was a selection process uh, of actually winnowing, winnowing down sort of what were the most appropriate pieces. Uh, and then there was the actual design and display work, um, that really Rebecca Udisay and um, uh, uh, David Coyle, who's the founder of Art Brokers, um, and really specializes in image, image restoration and how to create sort of, uh, imagery from photographs and exhibition as well, and they sort of created the, the, in the attachment, you can see sort of a, a floor plan where some of this artwork would hang and create sort of a narrative of as you go into the lobby, for example, um, what you're, how you're gonna move through the space, um, and what you're going to see and sort of connecting that to, um, the architecture itself. So, um, one of the main, um, in the lobby, I think, really, one of the, the main pieces of work and the main cost, I would say, many of the pieces are gonna be shown in that lobby, is really a, um, a sequence of photos that sort of describe the history, uh, going back to the earliest foundings of the town, through sort of the middle, um, portions of, of our, of our history, some of the commercial buildings that's starting to be built, and then more recent imagery as well. Um, those would be displayed in the lobby, um, as well as some landscape pieces of, um, uh, their prints of, of artists' work as well in the lobby, and those would be sort of, um, uh, additional imagery in, in a lot of the other rooms, um, in the public spaces, and, and so the council chamber, uh, conference room, uh, the permit center as well, that have older maps, et cetera, et cetera. So those are outlined in the, the staff report, um, we have the full list, if anybody wants to see, there, I think there's seventy-two images that would be framed, um, but I think it's, especially in the public space, it's really important to have that consistent look with the uh, and quality of, of prints. Um, I think it's intended that that at least the lobby spaces and some of the, uh, prints would be more permanent, although we did reserve a wall for uh, of the more recent history, um, to be, um, changed out and could be uh, you know, could be more curated in the future to allow for other sort of exhibits of local talk about local, uh, artwork from, uh, from our schools, et cetera, and things like that. Um, I did wanna acknowledge that it's not, the, one of the things that, uh, as we're talking about history, you talked recently about preserving the space certainly to acknowledge, um, uh, the prior residents of Corder Madera, um, Coast Meowak, um, who were, uh, originally inhabited the lands of Corder Madera, so we'll find a place to appropriately, uh, acknowledge um, the, our history there as well. Um, and there will be other pieces as well, we talked about sort of how, where the locations will be to talk about the environmental sustainability of the building, like an infographic of some sort, that would be appropriate for people to learn more about sort of the, the sustainability features of the, the new town hall. So, um, I will stop talking then, I'll and, and open it up, maybe, um, I don't know if Mayor Beckman or Vice Mayor Ravazio wanna add to the work of the Subcommittee, hopefully I described the process adequately, um, Rebecca's here as well to, um,
I, I, I would like to just add just a couple of words if I could. Um. In the entry of your lobby, I think the, the correct word is that it was really an educational piece. And we really wanted to be mindful to demonstrate, like Adam just reached out to say, you know, we forgot about the Meowak. And it's like, so we're staying within our budget. We're going to be able to open it. But what I love is that as someone that could be so little and to be fascinated, to be able to go and see the history, I can walk in and in one sweeping motion move through the entire lobby with such strong education of this town and representing this building and what you have achieved as today's founding members that are going to be, you know, going there. So uh, and I know that Pat and Eli can really attest to that as well, but it was an educational piece and it was intentional on that.
No, I agree. And, and I would say that part struck me as well when we looked through some of the archival material that, that John had and that's up at the county. And it's scattered throughout the community, but there's never been a place to actually see it in Cora Madera. And so what a, what a great way, I think, to actually um sort of, I don't know if we originally, we never had that envisioned when we, the building was designed, but now it can sort of provide that space to our community that it's never had um the way that other, you know, really other towns and cities uh a- around Marin and elsewhere. At least have someplace to go to say, hey, what did, what did this look like before? Some of the history and who became before us and then really the heritage of the town. So that's exciting.
And, and also I wanted to mention that it was Pat's great idea. And, and Jana saying that, you know, we have pieces that, you know, but we have no information, like this was from long ago. And so we really made it a point that each of these pieces within the frame itself, the information, what date, where it's from, what you're looking at. So in the future, as ambassadors, if that piece was ever removed, like you can feel moving from one building to the next. Some of our experience has been Rebecca Vaughn has found things, but they don't know where or how. And so we wanted to make a change as a, as our team was really working on that for the future, that this would always retain the knowledge and the information. And fifty years from now, someone can look at that and go, wow, and have that data right there. So I, I will step away from that, but uh that's really how beautiful of a presentation that school kids can go there. Like this will really be something special for your building.
Yeah. And, and I'll just say there are uh other pieces that down, locations down in the office building as well. Um, those are more photographic and representation of sort of landscapes and not. One of the things though that we did find that I thought was pretty cool was um some of the old, um, one of the productions of the Golden Hind, which I think was a a, a, a sort of handmade, um what was it?
It was a newspaper.
Newspaper.
Newspaper at the time.
It was a gentleman, a residence here in Cora Madera. When Pat, when we were, I'd like to think someone would go and make their own paper, write their own story, send this out. And it was all hand and done and but very fragile. Um, and we were able as a team, be able to select an incredible display that we're going to be able to, we took uh photographs of it because it's so fragile, it can't be touched. But we're going to be able to educate people. This was such a shock when we all saw it and we're like, we must have this and others must know about it. And that's the beauty of this incredible new building is that there is an opportunity to be able to showcase even at a higher level, what a beautiful town, what a beautiful history. And, and we made it a point that every single piece in some way was from Marin Town. And, and that will forever be. So. Yes.
Great. Thank you. I have nothing to add. Or Pat, did you want to add anything?
So we're just at, looking for action to, to basically pay the bill and get it done. So I think that's kind of a great. I, I don't really need to add anything except to say to Adam that while many of us weren't envisioning the historical aspect of this sort of becoming a hybrid town hall slash meet history museum slash art gallery. Um, there were people like John Ahale who've been sitting and waiting for about fifty years for her opportunity to make this happen. And that tenacity that she's had in being our town historian and in bringing these images forward and keeping them alive uh is, is really what's made the difference here. And it's not just the soothing, calming artwork that I was looking for to make everybody settle down, but it's, it's, it's really active history and, and uh more engaging content, I think. So I'm very supportive of all of it.
Thank you. So we'll take questions from council members now. We'll start down here.
Yeah, I just have a quick question about um the Meowak uh art that's going to be added out. Where is that sourced?
So uh we're sourcing it. Um, David has contacted the author of, of um a book that's been written in Marin. And we're actually getting documented, you know, that, uh, that we can describe where that's from, but it is specifically from the historical uh heritage side of things. And it was something that just came up new and what we wanted to do was retain the budget that was already in place. And in the very beginning, we might swap out three images just to start with our beautiful Meowak Indian, so that someone can come in and go all the way from there to your current.
Thank you. Question? Any questions? Question? I have no questions. Okay, so we'll take public comment now. Um, any members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
This is gonna be a song.
Come on down.
No. The main reason I focused on having the cinema via project is because the number of artists in my life, for fifteen years, I've been building large scale art in Birmingham. And I've been involved in community artist collectives, and particularly it was an amazing artist collective in Oakland. And then I've probably at this point spoken north of three hundred people in Cora Madera around this project and to a person, the number of people who say, we need more art in our community. And there are people who say like, I'm a working artist and I have no place where I display my arts. My house has got all my stuff up. So if the city hall, the city, you know, hall is going to become a place where art and our community art can be displayed, we can have a huge amount of support and permanent pieces, temporary collections. San Francisco's amazing museums, which are all about, particularly the Contemporary Jewish Museum, there is no permanent collection. It's a space to continually have the walls filled with the representation of who we are as a community. So as someone trying to start my own art gallery here in this space to be available publicly, Cola Cabo, you know, congrats for, for what you're doing. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in person tonight? All right. And seeing none, we'll open up for Zoom public comment. Do we have any hands up on Zoom?
No hands raised, but we did get an email, a public comment from Patty Stolier um saying, I just want to make sure that the documents we obtained to celebrate our centennial, including from the President of the United States, will be on display in the new building. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Patty. Um, no other hands up on Zoom?
No additional hands raised.
No other.
No additional email.
No other in person, public comment? Okay. Um, so we'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Anyone want to share any thoughts or make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the budget and the payment to Rebecca and her amazing team for the work on the town hall art uh aspects. I mean, it's, you've really added a whole new dimension to town hall and I think it's going to be beautiful. So. That was part of my motion. My motion is that we approve item as requested.
I, I can second that and I want to thank you also, but not just you, Eli, and also Pat, you, you know, Adam and all that served on that committee for, for moving this forward and all the great ideas.
Oh, you are welcome.
And we just have to wait forty-five days to see it.
They're ready.
And I just, I just wanted to also add, I really appreciate the team um coming back and making sure that we incorporate uh, you know, the Coast Meowak perspective here. I mean, I think the the vast majority of Cora Madera's human history is pre-colonial. So I think to just put the blinders on and say, we're only going to look at from incorporation to today uh is silly. And I really appreciate that we're actually taking a fuller view here so that we can educate folks on the full history of Cora Madera. So thank you.
And just, I want to say some of the images that we have called from the old days before there was any development, when the Meowaks were living here, have been artified to be colorized and made to look like a painting. So we have these amazing really impossible to have generated paintings from that era. So maybe the Meowak can be recognized in those the ones that are totally empty and you can't see anybody, you know, that's when the Meowak were here. So.
Yeah. And I guess my, my last comment on that would just be, I think representing the Meowak without, without consulting the Meowak about how they're represented.
We definitely want to.
Yeah, okay, exactly. Yeah.
Historical.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So I know you guys were already on that. And I would just, I, I just did a suggestion to, to the team, I would say, maybe let's make an attempt to reach out to, to the tribe. Um, I have personally tried to reach out to them a couple of times and didn't, was not able to establish communication, but, but perhaps they will respond to our, our, our time management here. Um. So just what, I, I think it's a, I think it's the right thing to do. Um, but thank you.
I agree.
All right. Awesome. Sounds like we have a motion and a second. Is that correct? Great.
Um, so I'll call the vote. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item seven here, which is council reports, and we will start with the town manager.
Okay, um. Let's see, I'll start with where we're, we just finished off. Um. I wanted to update the council on just the scheduling around staff's move and ultimately sort of the next month and a half here of what this is going to look like. So first off, um, our next council meeting will be held actually in the town hall, the new town hall. So, um. I, uh, it will be prior to actually staff moving into the building. But we are um uh moving I don't know what you say, uh. A lot of energy and effort is going into making sure that we can make that date happen. And so we will be there and it will be very exciting. Um, but it's going to be uh still sort of semi-under construction. It's going to be under a temporary CBO. So we'll, we'll be um the, the parking lot and whatnot will not be completed. So just stay tuned for updates on like where to locate yourself and, and, and we'll get everybody there uh safely and securely. And um it will, it will be very much um finished in the council room, in the public areas. So, uh staff is intending to move uh the day after uh Memorial Day and use that week to sort of move from this building and our suites over here, from our engineering trailer, all of our IT, there's a lot of moving pieces and parts, as you might imagine, and take that week to really um move into the new building and then really to adapt and, and acclimate to the new facility before really um making June third our official opening to the public to start doing business again. So I'm, I'm asking, um, well, going to be sort of a soft how I'm describing it for the week after Memorial Day. Uh, so just be aware of that. Um, we will still be available to members of the public by phone or email or by appointment if they need to get hold of us. Certainly any, all inspections will continue. But we're trying to reduce the volume of people actually coming in and, and calls and, and whatnot, um that are coming in so that we can undertake that move in a nice orderly manner and um comfortable manner. So, um. That's that's most of what we are in discussions of trying to figure out exactly when to have a more formal public grand opening. And we're now thinking it's latter part of June, maybe mid or later in June, um where we'll be ready to sort of really fully have that ceremony and welcome people um and celebrate um really what is a tremendous accomplishment on many levels. And uh tour people through the building and so on and so forth. So uh with that, the, another update, I wanted to mention, and this is uh very exciting, um personally and also for our planning team, um but uh we did put an application in um for the APA awards. And I will say that um the town has received a um award of excellence. That's essentially the first place prize for um the American Planning Association's North Coast or North Northern section, which essentially encompasses all the counties from Monterey throughout the Bay Area, all the way up the coast to the border of Oregon for first place for, in the category of public outreach for our housing element. Very timely, yeah. I'm tired of this special. Yeah. So it's really um nice uh to be recognized really um by our peers in, in the planning profession to our work that we did. A big part of that was related to our workshop series, also our video at the end that we did, um and a lot of the website work um that is done through that effort. And so um we'll be awarded that in September. I think we're also gonna, hey, you know, why, why not press our luck with the whole state? Um, and, and see if we can get our award there as well. So, um uh but that's nice. And we'll, we'll present something and send something out regarding that. Cause I think it's um it, it's, it's important to, to share that with our community. Um, finally, um sort of along those same lines, the next meeting, we are going to uh show a video that we uh developed as part of our shoreline adaptation engagement effort. And so that will be shown at the next council meeting. I want that to be sort of along the same lines as the housing element. We've been engaged with the public outreach effort around flooding and flood vulnerabilities in Maricopa and Marina Village. And I think those have seen it, I mean, I know I'm super impressed by this professional video that we've created that actually really visualizes and helps people understand and visualize what our vulnerabilities really are to existing um tidal influenced flooding as well as some projections at high tides and moving forward in the near term. We're not talking about like way down the road. We're talking about these are really real threats and vulnerabilities that uh to our bayside neighborhoods out there. And so we want to show that. Uh, it was released at the flood board meeting at the last meeting on that last Monday, which also just be aware, there was um concerns raised at that meeting regarding sedimentation in Lagoon One, um which maybe uh Councilmember Thomas might speak to and her report else also out there. But um excited to show all of you in our community that video and get that more attention because it's just going to be really important moving forward in terms of where we devote some of our resources and efforts um as a town.
Great. Thank you, Adam, and congratulations again on it. Um, we'll go to council reports now and we'll start with Brett.
Uh, yeah. On uh April seventeenth, I attended Ross Valley Paramedic Authority Subcommittee. Uh, that Subcommittee is dealing with a couple of different issues. One is a legal issue with respect to the joint powers agreement. And also we're using attorney out of San Diego. I guess he's the only one who does this in the state of California. It's related to ambulances, franchises, and then later RVPA. And then also there's progress on deployment study to see where ambulances should be placed through the greater Ross, Ross Valley. Hopefully we'll get data by June or so. Um, on, also on the same day later that day, I attended a friendly Cora Madera meeting. April twenty-fourth, attended the MCC MC meeting, which I think several of us also did. May second, attended the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority Board Meeting. It's budget season. Um, so we reviewed the preliminary budget. There's no major changes there. Uh, we are looking potentially next couple of years, picking up a new ambulance after so many miles. They just were out. And one thing to note there that Chief Weber from the county brought up, uh Ross Valley Paramedic, RVPA, Ross Valley Paramedic, I think the month before, they had three codesets. And codesets are facing people where they go out and they have to reset to tam through defibrillation. Um, so there's three codesets, which really speaks to how the paramedics are run, both on the engines, both the fire departments and also the inventory. So it's really great. Uh, May sixth, attended Marin Transit Board Meeting. Just a couple of things there. Uh, we approved a program which has been done in the past, youth ride free for the months of June through August on Marin Transit. And then we also extended, um, we had twelve month pilot. We extended another twelve months, but it's on a month to month. It's a um catch a ride pilot program. It's for those sixty-five or older, not eligible for ADA para-transit. Um, and their subsidiaries, uh Marin Transit subsidizes those rides. And those rides are a, a take on either North Bay Taxi or through Uber. And they're either digital vouchers or paper vouchers. They're trying to go more digital because of paper vouchers. There's a cost through that process. Um, and that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Charles.
Yeah. So I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting today. Um. They're having an event Thursday. It's a mixer from five to seven at Marin Lux Creek Cars, where they'll also be having a silent auction fundraiser. Lots of really great donations to, to look at. Um, this Thursday, I'm going to be attending the police and buyer commissions. Uh, I received an email uh about an opening happening in July from uh Steve Martin or um about the New Marin ECC, which we funded, um for the fire dispatch opening. That's Tuesday, June eleventh, and you can RSVP and they're giving tours from four to four forty-five. Um, that's all I have to report.
Would you mind forwarding that to?
I can. Yes, I would love to.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll give it to staff and let them distribute it.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
How they see that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so on April twenty third. I attended a virtual workshop. On catastrophe modeling and rate making in relationship to the insurance industry. And fires. California is one of the only states that doesn't allow modeling to be used in pricing and the. Insurance industry in California is saying, no, 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 we really need to have modeling. So what this workshop was about. Was to get input from the industry. Both people who make models, people who want to use those models, insurance companies and the public. To talk about. What if if models could be used, whose models can be used, who's going to make those models? Will they be a public model? That is used by everyone or will each of the insurance companies be able to make their own models? And the argument was that the insurance industry, they don't want their models to be public. Because then their competitors know what their models are. So it was a lively discussion, a lot of really, really bright people from within the industry. From, you know, university. Engineers who have done this kind of stuff before. So really great. And then on April twenty fourth, I. Attended also virtually the Fair Housing California Conference. It was a like a four hour. With a lot of great speakers talking about different creative ways to. Further affordable housing. In California. And then on the twenty ninth of April, I attended the special flood. Board meeting where they reviewed the master plan. That was a very lively meeting. With a lot of probably more people than I've ever seen in this room. So, yeah, so it was it was it was very good. A lot of. Public input. May sixth, I attended Twin Cities Disaster Prevention. Meeting and a lot of talk about. Controlling fuel, removing fuel with fires as we're coming into the summer season. And lots of also training and information being made available to community members through the NRGs. And then on May fifth, which was yesterday, oh, no, that wasn't yesterday. Anyway, on May fifth, there was in our neighborhood. An NRG social, which was well attended and very much enjoyed. That's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I'm going to read this to make it quicker so I don't get off the subject. I attended the CalCities conference in Sacramento and learned that there are some tough roads ahead for our cities. We are on the defense. From state budget shortfalls to climate change and to deceptive ballot measures like the so-called Taxpayers Accountability Act. Which threatens to undo already voted for taxes like bonds for police, fire and ambulance service. It seems intended to pit people against their own local governments so that the state and not the local governments will collect the taxes. It's being called the Taxpayer Deception Act by CalCities and they're hoping that name will stick. On a brighter side, a big thank you to Public Works for the spring cleanup of our median strips. They look great. And also for letting the grasses grow during the nesting season out at the marsh and in areas where we don't need to provide. Public access. Wherever we can, letting grasses grow during the nesting season is very good for the overall ecosystem. Not just the birds and small animals, but also increases carbon capture along the highways. A big gripe to Caltrans for their clumsy massive herbicide application all along both sides of US one oh one. Corvada Dara now looks like a burn victim with all that brown along both sides of the highway. So much for the lush green Marin County in springtime. Now that it has rained again and washed all that roundup back into our storm drain and into the bay, the weeds are going to grow back again. And so they will no doubt need to apply these environmental toxins again. Damon Connolly's bill did not pass to prohibit Caltrans from spraying herbicides in towns where we have. Integrated pest management and don't allow herbicide use, but that's a battle, I guess, to be won on another day. Couple more quick things. Sorry.
That's great.
Cafe Verde is planning to paint an outdoor mural to pitch a vision they have for the old barn to become a kid's art and community venue. You'll come to school. Our teacher, Liza Matthews, has offered to support with artists and leadership. If anyone wants to have input or otherwise help with that project, contact Zaid Tony at Cafe Verde. And finally, mark your calendar for June eleventh, when the Lions Club will host our own excellent public works director, RJ Suko. Talking about how to engineer a great small town.
Thank you. Great reports all around. I attended the CalCities Leader Summit with Pat from April seventeenth to nineteenth. On April twenty fourth, I attended a meeting of the beautification committee. It was great to just check in on their work. Excitingly, they're starting to consider bringing back the street trees program, which was well loved. So I hope that that ends up happening. On April twenty fourth, a number of us attended the MCC MC meeting. Where the featured speaker was our state senator and Senate Pro Tem Mike McGuire, who mentioned. His fantastic work findings thirty something million dollars for our overpass. So huge thanks to him and his office again that that. I mean, that's transformational to to improving that overpass there. On April twenty fifth, I attended the Transportation Authority Marine Meeting, which included a special. Like strategic workshop around the countywide transportation plan that's currently under development. On April twenty eighth, I attended the painted bins ribbon cutting in Town Park, which if you guys haven't seen it, we have public. Composting bins, which is fantastic. They're decorated with educational art from kids, which is incredible. It's a great program. And I also attended the a youth forum put on by the League of Women Voters and the. It was the Student Election Ambassadors Program is what it's called. And it was just a fantastic event. Put on by high school students and and League of Women Voters to help basically encourage kids to get involved in in politics. On May first, I attended the MCC, excuse me, the MCE Executive Committee Meeting. And on May third, I attended the CalCities Executive Committee Meeting. And since we were talking about. Earlier this evening, sort of what what service as a council member looks like and and what the time commitment is, I'm just going to highlight that MCE meeting was about three hours. That TAM meeting was five hours and the CalCities Leader Summit was two and a half days. That is my report. With that, we're going to move on. Do we have any comments on our draft agenda for the upcoming meeting?
One thing, maybe not the next beat, but can we get Steve Torrance from, he's with the Marin County Office of Emergency Management to come? They're doing, I know they're doing, in the process, doing a risk assessment. They also connected with Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency that I'm a former member there also. They're using software, AI software for evacuation. And they're starting to do modeling now and they're doing tabletop exercises. So it's really, it's really fascinating because they're looking back in time plus looking forward.
Very cool.
So it's, yeah, it is super cool. That's the way they're doing it. But if we can get him, because I think it's really important.
Yeah, he's great. Thank you. And if there are no comments on our draft agenda, I'd just like to adjourn this meeting in celebration of the birthday. Of our fantastic Assistant Town Manager Rebecca Vaughn. So I hope Rebecca's having a wonderful night.